City Council Works, I'm sorry.
Okay, now.
Now we're ready. Welcome, everybody, to the City Council Work Session. It's Monday, August 10th, 2020, 4:30 PM at the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers here in City Hall. Proposed regular agenda for August 17th, 2020, first up is a public hearing. Consider, well, let me change that. I said I was going to do this. First up, we're going to do our discussion items. And that would be Tree Advisory Board update. Scott Zeiser, you're up. Scott, first.
Thank you. I am Scott Zeiser, 11456 Upper Flint Road, Burlington, Iowa. I am here to report, or my annual report from the Tree Advisory Board. I am the Chair. And our committee is Robert Walker, Lisa Loak, Dale Smizer, Dave Hazel, Joyce Taggert, and Kelly Rundell. Accomplishments this past year. In the fall, October 3rd of 2019, which seems a long time ago, we hosted two events at the Outdoor Classroom. And one was a planting demonstration for the first grade class of Blackhawk Elementary. And the other was an open demonstration, tree planting, open to the public. We utilize that outdoor classroom at Crepo Park if we can. Most of the time, it's a great setting, a learning experience. And it's all, will hold future events coming on. February 12th, we had a contractors meeting for the tree people in Burlington, Iowa. Show them what Burlington expects out of them as a company and the regulations and their laws. Since 1992 to 2019, Trees Forever has awarded grant money to the city of Burlington in the amount of $142,900. With these dollars, the city has estimated it planted 14,000 to 15,000 trees. So that's quite an accomplishment there. The Forestry Division has been working to complete their routine pruning throughout the city. In Zone 19, we have zoned different zones, so they transferred one zone to another in the city. And they have completed over 1,400 work records since this time, one year ago. We are continually working with Geoforestry to properly log Otter Island. We will assist Aspen Grove in August, well, coming up in two weeks, with their tree inventory. We're going to help them with their tree inventory of all the trees in Aspen Grove Cemetery locations. We are going to try to have a tree climbing competition. Whitey Walker's going to try to head this up. He's very engaged in this activity. He's seen it in Indiana, and he wants to bring it to 2021 to Burlington, Iowa. And then we are updating Jefferson and Main Streets with the assistance of the Tiger Grant. So that is my annual report. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them. If not, Patrick from the city of Burlington is here also.
Questions, guys?
What are the most hardy trees to plant? Seems everything seems to be coming down in these winds anymore.
Our natives are oaks. We have too many maples, basically red maples. The hard maples, the sugar maples are very hardy. And there's other good trees, hackberries, black gum, some of those varieties that we're trying to sub in for the ash that we lost. So there are good trees out there, but the native trees are your best trees.
Scott, is there been any discussion what kind of trees they're going to use on the Tiger Grant areas? Main Street and Jefferson?
That, I think, Patrick, that would be a question for Patrick.
Come on up, Patrick, it's your turn, please.
We have looked at a couple of different trees for that. From the company that's kind of doing the bids for us, they kind of are assessing what would look good down there for the buildings and everything and for maintenance-wise. So they're looking at like some genko, some pear trees. I believe that they have Kentucky coffee going in there. And then like, it's going to be different than what Jefferson and Main are going to be completely different kind of plantings. You're going to have some of the bigger oaks and some Kentucky coffee trees or something like that on Main Street. And you're going to have the smaller, medium-sized trees on Jefferson, so we're not overwhelming the buildings with the canopy.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you do on that, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up would be Historic Preservation Commission update. Steve Frevert.
Hello, good to see everybody. Steve Frevert, the Chairman of the City's Historic Preservation Commission, 1717 South Main. Typically, we do this update in May during National Historic Preservation Month, but of course, we all know how that goes. So let me give you just kind of a quick rundown of what we have accomplished in 2019. Along with myself, the other commissioners are Hal Morton, David Rhode, Judy Stevens, Mark Fisher. Last year, we also had Barb Nelson-Bots. She was our Heritage Hill Neighborhood Representative. She was replaced by Jane Schulte. And then last year, we also had Kay Weiss on the committee commission. She stepped down at the end of her term, the beginning of this year, and has been replaced by Stephanie Breakville. In 2019, we met six times as a commission. We had a quorum at each meeting. We did have nine alterations to National Register properties in 2019. At 423 North Third Street, which is the Good Restaurant, we approved siding replacement and rebuilding of a second-floor porch. At the Depot, windows and interior rehab on the former diner wing of it. 718 Columbia, at 8th and Columbia, we approved four front and side porches, and they've done some roofwork. I believe that is continuing. 425 Valley, the Blau Building, total rehab building was begun last year, completed this year. 300 and 310 Jefferson, the Tama and C and E Buildings demolition was completed in 2019. 803 Jefferson, Pukie's Thai Cuisine had a storefront reconfiguration. At 805 Jefferson, the Collective, interior rehab and paint. And then a project I really like to make special note of in Crepo Park, the Hawkeye Log Cabin. Last year, we worked with the city and Heritage Trust volunteers did the labor to re-roof the Hawkeye Log Cabin. So that was, that was a really nice project. Last year, we had no local historic properties designated by the commission, and none were delisted. We did meet the required training to maintain our certified local government status in 2019. That included several of us attending the Preserve Iowa Summit in Newton in June of last year. Last year's public outreach project was kind of a follow-up on the Heritage Hill Neighborhood Design Guidelines. We gave a public presentation of those guidelines on May 15th of last year. And then just very briefly, what we hope to accomplish in 2020, you know, given the situation we're all in. We have participated in some online state trainings, including the State Preservation Conference, which went all digital online in June. And thank you very much to the city for covering our registration fee for that conference. We still hope to plan some kind of preservation-related public activity, perhaps this fall. Remains to be seen just what that is and what that will entail, but we'll keep you apprised of that. Something we've talked about a bit is a few of our commissioners would like to see us explore the possibility of some kind of incentive and/or recognition of historic rehab projects that have been done well. I think that would be a good way, not only to promote the work that the commission does and the design guidelines as the people who live in the Heritage Hill District need to follow them, but also kind of give them a pat on the back for doing things the correct way. And along with that, we want to continue publicizing the Heritage Hill Design Guidelines, you know, especially as people move in and out of that district. And we want to make sure new homeowners are aware of the ordinance and what that entails. It's a little early, but we would always encourage the city to budget some money for a CLG grant. Those grant applications do right about now, and so it's obviously too late for this year. But a certified local government grant could be used for things like bringing a conference here, bringing a workshop here, doing some historic site survey work or a National Register nomination. So those are all things that would be paid for, I believe it's 50% by a CLG grant. So that might be something worth following up on. And then lastly, tentatively scheduled for tomorrow, we are supposed to be meeting with Doug Wells, the developer of the Tama site, on his plans for the infill buildings that would be going there. So we'll see whether or not that happens. I understand they had some weather problems out west of us today, unsurprisingly. So that's tentatively scheduled tomorrow. And I think that's kind of one of the last things that he needs to do before really he can start work on that new development. And then, of course, we remain engaged in the process with whatever happens with Cascade Bridge, which is a National Register Historic Site. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ken?
Steve, you mentioned bringing something to the local area with the grant. What would that look like? What would the cost be? What would you be bringing?
Eric, the design guidelines, that was about a $14,000, $15,000 total cost. So that was about $7,000 paid from a CLG grant. And I think that was probably the top number. I think most of our projects have been quite a bit less than that. So, you know, we could bring somebody in to do a historic window repair workshop that would, you know, might be, I don't know, $1,000 or something. Putting on, you know, a full conference obviously takes a lot more work and a lot more funding. But in terms of survey work, a lot of that is done by volunteers working in concert with a consultant. So there's a lot of different choices here, you know. In a way, it's, the commission could offer some suggestions to the council. Hey, we think these are some activities that would be beneficial for the community and that we can kind of guide us along the way.
I know, Steve, I have really enjoyed when you do your seminars and you talk about the old homes or anything. Was there any way we could move that into, I see that on a big grand scale. Is there any way we could get funding and then do something like that?
In terms of doing a public presentation or?
That room was packed when I was there.
It was packed.
Yes. It was a good program. It was very, it was well done, very well done.
We talked about, a long time ago, like probably several iterations of the city website ago, we used to have, have a version of that on the city's website. We could, we could think about doing that again with an updated version. But, you know, I'm always happy to give that presentation.
I could see you on the speaking tour doing that. That was fun. That was a lot of fun. Work up some more. Work up some more. Those were good.
Yeah, no, yeah, I would love to do more like that. I think the more we engage people in appreciating their built surroundings, you know, we have a wonderful historic city here, and the more people learn about it, the more they appreciate it, so.
You're right. A lot of hidden gems here.
Yep.
Thanks, Steve.
Any other questions for Steve? Ken?
Good to see you, though.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks for, thanks, thanks to the commission for their work. Appreciate it. Next up would be the parking pass discussion. Who's leading that?
This has been a topic that has come up a couple of different times, and it's been protracted over a long period of time. One of the things that has come to light is that we have an awful lot of parking passes that are out there for the senior center. We also don't have a formal policy that recognizes what, the justification for that. Our current code of ordinances, and I think the chief could speak to this a little bit better than I can, but there is no discretion that's written in there in terms of the hours. The only thing that I can think of to come up with that would give some level of coverage for that is a resolution or a modification of the ordinance that carves out a street or something, some format that gives some consistency for the police department to justify what they're doing. Even with a resolution that authorized parking passes, I, we'd have to check a little bit on the legality and how we do that in a way that is appropriate, that doesn't put us into a potential problem with how we do other tickets for others. But with that being said, we do have this, a request to have a set number of parking passes allowing individuals that are using the senior center to park on Jefferson or one of the side streets where there are some limitations for the hours of usage. And with that, I'll turn that over to the representatives from the senior center for having their request.
Hi. Please.
Carolyn Cloak from the senior center, the president there.
Please give your address, too, please. Please give your address, too, please.
607 North Central Avenue.
Thank you.
And as they've already talked about, the passes, I understand that some of the passes in the past have been abused. And I was not aware of that, but I can see how that can happen. But what we have thought now, if we had passes, we would make it so that they would have to sign them out and bring them back again that night. You know, on Mondays is the biggest card-playing time. And we do make a little bit of money at that, not much, but it's one of our better parts. And so there have been some that have gotten tickets, $15 tickets. One just last week, I guess. And then there is one lady that, that was one way that she could get out and do some things. She walks with a walker. It's very hard for her to get in and out, even though she has to come up the ramp. And she got a ticket. And so she had to decide that she could not do this anymore because she just couldn't afford to do that. And so these are the people that I'm really concerned about. I don't personally, at this present time, have time to play cards. And I'm there some of the days that I open, and I see these people come in. Some people do bring their parents, not very many, but there's a couple that do. And I can see that would be very hard for them. Some of the people that are there could probably help them, but someone wouldn't even be able to help the other person. So it would really, we could, we could work the passes. Somebody could go out, put them on, bring them back in. So if we could just have a few passes, so that would, we'd get these people in. Because otherwise, they don't get out. They stay at home. And I'm finding out, even in my own family, with a sister that has been put in assisted living with the COVID going on, she can't get out that much. And when she calls and talks to me, she just talks and talks and talks because she don't have anybody around. So it's very important for these people to get out. And that's what we're running.
How many passes do you have right now? Because we, we don't know.
Do we have any at all?
Passes?
Oh, there isn't remaining out. And I would say the most would have been 10. A lot of them have passed on. We used to have 15.
Okay. Because at one point in time, if I remember right, in the discussion, we had a problem with another group down there that was making their own. Is that correct?
And they're there, they're not there no more.
Carolyn, let me ask you this. The people that got tickets, is that because they did not have passes? Or their time ran out or what happened?
The other, oh, the ones that got tickets, they parked on the side that was three hours, but they're there from noon to four.
Okay.
And that's bridge players and pinochle players. Hoping to increase that a little bit with more cards. You know, encouraging other card players like Uger or whatever that might come in. Because it's a cheap afternoon. $2 to play.
Not cheap if you get a $15 ticket. I know one of the things one of the hair salons does downtown is they keep track of what time their customers come in. And if that time elapses, then they take the keys and then they move the vehicle for them. I don't know if that would be something that would work for you guys. I know it's a hassle.
Once in a while, there would be somebody that would be able to do that. We have a couple of people that, a couple or three people that come that probably could do that for someone.
Because I hate to have them sitting at home lonely and not socialized. That really brings on dementia early. That's really bad for health.
For some of those people, that's all that they have.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we need to have policy. I mean, we need to have something that Jim can put on paper, not just we want people to move each other's cars.
Yeah.
And we need, we need to have something.
So that back parking lot is free?
Yeah.
And as I understand it, cards start typically at the same time every week. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Does everybody pretty much show up on time?
There, well, with the back parking lot, there are several of us that have been parking in that to leave it for other people. If we know it's a day that there's not going to be very many, those of us who can, you know, park on the side and not have to worry about being in the front or whatever, we make sure that we park down further than the handicap. And, because some of us do have that handicap pass. And I have Parkinson's, and I have that. But I try to park further down so other people can have that, you know, so.
The reason I was asking, I was wondering if, if, looking for a solution, because there, the problem is we have to be fair to the other businesses in that area.
I understand that.
I've had that discussion, so. I'm wondering is if we, and I haven't run this by anybody yet, or it's just an idea off the top, and it's going to involve Nick, whether we would have a, if we knew what time they were generally coming, if we had a city bus, which typically has some access capabilities, that would pick them up at the Valley Street lot and bring them and drop them off at the front. And then again, when cards is over, we'd run a bus down there. Now, I don't know what his schedule is. We'd have to look at that, but that might be one way of utilizing that free lot where you could be there for a while, which I'd have to, I'd have to, Nick, I'm sorry to spring that on you, but that would be something, I don't know if we have the capabilities to do something like that. Okay. And I'm not even sure. I haven't been on a bus in a while. I'm not sure how.
We have a city bus that runs, well, we have multiple city buses that run through the downtown after the top of every hour. So they're at the depot at the top of the hour, and then they leave from there pushing westward. So by, you know, whatever, 05, we would probably be through this section of town if, you know, on an hourly basis, and we come back towards that same direction, so.
So your suggestion is to bus them to the lot behind them?
Well, yeah, pick them up like a bus stop. Pick them up at the Valley Street and drop them off at the front door, and then come back through later. And whoever who's needing a bus, pick them up and bring them back to the valley.
I'm fairly sure we have buses that probably take that type of route now.
Okay.
That I can make them be aware of.
Because, I mean, that would, that would at least get, we'd have free parking access, but also they wouldn't have to walk from, from back there up the sidewalk. Because that is a little bit of a grade there. Thanks, Nick. That might be something worth, worth looking at. And I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but I, I'd like to see us use the free parking because then you can be there as long as you need to. And if that runs every hour, it could, and if we made it kind of a stop, we could pick you up, run you back to the parking lot, pick you up at the parking lot, and run you back up to the senior center entrance. So I don't know if that, if that works or not. I'm sure that's going to be a little bit, would be a lot more work for the city bus, but that's what the bus is for.
If something like that or the passes could just be, because it's just a Wednesday and a Friday.
Those are the two days. Monday?
That's the only two days.
Monday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
Monday, Wednesday night, so they don't, you don't even have to worry about that one.
Yeah.
And Friday. And if they, if, sometimes on Fridays, they don't, but they like to as much as they can, so.
Okay, and the Wednesdays are night, afternoon situation?
Yeah. Because it's really hard for some of those people. I see them huffing and puffing when they come in. One old gentleman that we have, he has a hard time, and his daughter brings him. And you can tell him just getting in inside, and he's one that wants to set up everything for his card players. And finally, he'll sit down because he's just so out of breath and gets his oxygen on. Yeah, we would really appreciate that, so.
Are the times the same for Monday and Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So most of you would communicate this to the card players, that the bus is going to be there about what time? Now, what if the weather's bad, Nick? How does that enter? Can they be given a phone number and call the driver or something?
That might be, yeah.
Well, the simplest solution for the police department and for the city is to not have any passes. Because.
I understand.
You know, you know how that works.
I do.
We give passes to you. I've had people call me, well, why can't I get a pass? You know, I, I employ so many people downtown. Why can't I get a pass? Because I need to get back and forth to my business. And so it really puts us in a tough spot. However, we do want to accommodate as much as we can. That's why I was just sitting there thinking, okay, looking at that, is, could that be a solution? Or at least could we try it and see if that doesn't help? You know, it's not, it's not 10, it's not 10 passes, but that's something, and if, then if we, you know, if we saw the parking lot was getting full, then we could revisit that again. But if the bus could come in and pick them up right at the, right at the back of their car, or they could walk just a few steps to the bus, and they get off and we'd let them ride off at the front door, that might be worthwhile.
See, I think I don't necessarily want to rely on Nick's buses. I don't want to be able to see that. And the reason is, is if they're closing up shop, now you've got people waiting because they need a ride from the front door to their vehicles or vice versa. When it gets cold, that's not going to be an option. I think we're just asking for trouble. I'm okay with the passes, to be honest with you. I would like for you guys to define a peak time that you feel like they're absolutely necessary, and then they would only be allowed to be used during those times, not a 24/7 pass. But, you know, if you needed a Monday from 1 to 4, then they're only valid Monday from 1 to 4.
We do have Harmonaires, which is our own little.
Yeah, I don't, I don't particularly care.
On Thursday.
Who uses them?
You know, and we're only there for, from 1 to 3. And so it's not, we don't, we're not taking up a lot of time, two days, and then the one short day. So, you know, I understand the other problems.
And then, and then again, for those people who participate that can use the free parking, just leave it up to you guys to police it. I don't know that we need to necessarily do that. And encourage them to use the free parking. I don't want you to have 15 passes. I think that that's a little excessive. Excuse me. But I think there's a reasonable number, whether that's five, seven, 10, I don't know, but.
I could go with 10.
Why don't we look, why don't we, why don't we try to put a number on it? Can you give us your schedule and how many participants, kind of on average, and write that down for us? And we can look at that. And that way, we can maybe determine the passes. Because, you know, you understand where we're coming from, I think. You and, we've all had that discussion, but it can't be right, it can't be 15. I don't know if 10's the right number, but if we had an idea what your peak times were. You know, and then if you change those times, you know, of course, we could always adapt. But that might give us a little bit more. I don't really want to put this off any longer. So if you could put that, give us a schedule together.
What about if I email you that?
That would be great. If you could give me that and kind of a count about how many, you know, and then maybe we could take that to the parking, the parking study, whatever we call it, Parking Commission, and work with them and see if we can't come to a number that everybody, including your neighbors, is comfortable with. Would that, would that be?
That would be great.
And then in the meantime, you know, if we can work out something where the people do choose, use a lot, maybe we can incorporate that, that bus route. So let's, if you get that to us, we'll get with the Parking Commission. And we'll try to get an answer to this thing so we can put it to, put it to bed.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
One of the, one of the other things that I would say, and I just throw kind of caution to the wind a little bit, is if you guys are going to let people use them, I would encourage you not to have those people park in front of businesses that are along the street. More, try to keep it located close to your position or to the, to your address. And the reason is, if, if. And the reason is, is if, if, if you, we let you continue to use them and they get abused or people perceive that they're being abused or their shop is one that's constantly being parked in front of, then they're gonna likely come and wanna talk to us and then it becomes an issue again. And we may not be the council members at that point in time, so.
I understand.
I would just encourage you to kind of police it amongst yourselves.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we can do that.
We had a plan of action then.
Yes.
All right?
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thanks Carolyn.
Now we're gonna let you out in the middle of the storm. Yep, yep. Thanks, thanks Carolyn. Thanks, Mr. Coe. All right. And then since we're doing the discussion items, we'll go ahead and do the appointments. Uh, there are three. Uh, first all, first is Flint Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee. Uh, Commission Member Richard Maxwell's term has expired. He is interested in re- uh, serving again, so it's, it's requested that we reappoint him to a new three-year term. Housing Appeals, uh, Commission Member Sid Carter resigned in July. Patricia Walls has expressed an interest in serving. And so it's recommended that council appoint, uh, consider appointing Patricia Walls to fill his unexpired term, which would end in twenty twenty-five. And Renewable Energy Committee Commission Member Justin Norona's term has expired in June. He's expressed an interest in serving an additional three-year term, so it's requested that we consider reappointing him. Does anybody have any questions or problems with those appointments?
That's good.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the proposed regular agenda. First up is a public hearing, consideration of the Burlington, Burlington Locust Basin Sewer Project as required by the Community Block Development Grant.
At the, at the public hearing, Susan Coffey will be here uh, to go over the C D B G process. With the project, it's funded with the
Six hundred thousand dollar C D B G grant?
Is that how much it was? Uh, part of the, one of the requirements of that is, is that you re, get to where, where you're at fifty percent of disbursements. Uh, you give an update status on the project. I'm not exactly sure why, but it is a, a step along the way. We had a public hearing before we did the, before we did this project as well. Uh, it's just another step along the way, just to keep everybody up to date to where we are on the Locust Separation Project.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Jim on that gang? Seeing none. Next up is a resolution approving the purchase of two rooftop units for Public Works. Nick?
Uh, the resolution in front of you would be uh, authorizing the purchase of two rooftop units uh, at the Public Works facility um, from Frank Millard Company for twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh, currently in the C I P for fiscal year twenty-one, which we would have set uh, back in March. Uh, we s, put in sixteen thousand dollars in the budget for uh, one of the rooftop units. Since then, during the summer when we started, it uh, started falling apart. And we actually inquired when we did the, for the one unit, we required what it would take for two. Um, and it was only a little bit more to try and get that done. The large part is to get a crane and get those two units up there. Um, I would recommend replacing these and it's, because it's over, over the budget and it's two units instead of one, that's the white, reason why you're seeing it in front of you. So I would recommend approval on that.
Anybody have any cost uh, concerns on that? No?
So just to clarify, we're gonna do two units for twenty-one eight hundred?
Correct.
Yeah. Yep. Thanks, Nick. Uh, next up uh, would be on the proposed consent agenda. First is resolution approving nuisance and demolition abavements for various properties. Anybody see anything? Mow your grass, people, please. Number two is a resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the lease and retention monies for the twenty seventeen Harris Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements Project.
Uh, this uh, resolution finally closes this. Uh, it's probably the longest standing capital project we have out there. Uh, so Harrison Street at the end of the bluff, uh, we had a sanitary line and a storm sewer line. This is kind of the prerequisite project to the issue that we now have. Uh, we separated the storm sewer so that it wouldn't infiltrate into the sanitary line and cause us problems. Um, so this project is closing out. Uh, we hired Phi Excavating for it. Uh, we originally awarded contract at two hundred and forty-three thousand and change. Uh, through some quantity adjustment and change orders, we ended up less than that at two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, the account was out of the sewer separation funds.
Okay.
Um, everything seems to be okay, other than the issues that we now have that are kind of secondary to that.
That'll be next up.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions there, gang? No? Uh, next up, resolution for approving amendment to the agreement with the H R Green Inc. for design of the location basin super sewer separation project.
Uh, so the resolution in front of you would approve an amendment with H R Green, uh, who we hired at the beginning of the Locust Separation Project. Uh, we had a design contract with them for eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars uh, to design, uh, what it amounted to be about seven million dollars in sewer separation work. Uh, as the contractor is, uh, has gone through some of walnut, the, the roadway was planned to be an asphalt patch. Um, as they've been, began excavating, the roads kind of crumbled in on top of it. Rather than going back in with asphalt uh, replacement. For, for the dollars that we got bid on that project, it makes sense to do uh, concrete or P C C. Uh, but in order to do that, we do need it designed so that way the slopes and everything makes sense. Uh, the thirteen thousand five hundred dollar amendment in there is for them to design the two blocks. It feels fairly steep for that type of work, but we got an amendment, which you may have noticed it was amendment two. We actually had an amendment for another block where we made that same type of change order. We were able to do that in-house quicker. We just don't have the ability to do this one, so. It was actually higher than this amendment, so I, I feel comfortable doing a little bit more work for this dollar figure, but uh.
What's P C C?
Concrete.
Thank you.
Portland, Portland.
You said concrete or P C C?
No, I said, sorry, I meant like a slash.
All right. Good. I'm glad you asked that, cause I was gonna ask the same thing. All right, any, any questions on that? No? Uh, number four, resolution for accepting the final draft of Cascade Bridge Study from Impact Seven G.
Uh, following the presentation by Impact Seven G in, at the end of July, uh, we've had, uh, go in and revise any sort of typos and corrections. And now in the packet uh, for you to approve uh, is the final draft version of that. And I think the importance of this is to uh, one, accept and, you know, mo, take the information that they gathered and provided for you to use that kind of as your decision-making uh, moving forward, so.
Will we get a hard copy by any chance?
A hard copy?
Mm-hmm.
We can print one off for you.
There's, there's one, well, there's a pack, yeah, one of the packet, but not.
I just didn't wanna put it.
I have it. I have it on the packet.
There's a digital copy that I think it's like three hundred some pages. So, I mean, we can make a hard copy. There's no reason why we can't for filing purposes, but.
Yeah. Any, any questions, gang? No? Okay. Number five, resolution for approving Tiger Grant Agreement for Construction Phase.
Uh, so this resolution would authorize the mayor to sign um, the Tiger Grant Agreement. Uh, we had a previous Tiger Grant Agreement that authorized the engineering portion, uh, the kind of the timeline and the dollars that obligated those funds to pay for our engineering. Uh, we have a second phase to obligate the, the remaining funds to do. There is a redline copy of that grant agreement in there. It isn't finally approved. That's actually at headquarters of Federal Highway. The reason why this is in here um, is because of the timetable and what we have left prior to the obligation timeframe. It has to be obligated by February, or February, man, September eighteenth in the FEMA's, I got the F got in my way. Um, their system, so before this and then another council meeting, I would just wanna give the authorization uh, to the mayor to sign off on that Tiger Grant Agreement. I don't see anything really changing in the grant agreement. A lot of its timelines on the dates that we are, are going to try and hit uh, and then it obligates the funds.
Okay.
So it's, it's ne, absolutely necessary uh, to have the funds to be able to do the project, so. I would recommend approving it, so. Just wanna give a little bit more explanation on
Okay.
why you're approving it prior to actually having to sign a agreement from Federal Highway.
Questions on that one? Uh, it looks like they're making some progress on our other calls too.
Yeah, and as a, we sent off stuff to B N S F. They, we overnighted some things to them and they're aware of it. Uh, the, the NEPA clearance got approved for the impact monitoring. And we should by the end of the week have the core uh, permit in hand or ready. And then we just need to hear from Fish and Wildlife, but I, Leo's been on, in their ear for the last week or two. So I think we should be getting that. The biggest thing will be, will be B N S F and how long they take uh, to get the rail agreement back to us. And that's the reason why I gave authorization in the previous council meeting for you to sign that is because it, the timetables might be pretty compressed getting towards that September eighteenth.
Fish and Wildlife is the mussels issue, right?
Correct.
And where are we on that?
So what happened is, is because of the river level and the temperature that the river level has to be, we ran out of complete time until we were able to get it done in May. Well, they found two um, mussels, a Higgins eye and a yellow, I don't know what it is. Um, but they're on the endangered species list, which means you have to perform a biological assessment. Basically saying and stating what you're gonna do with these mussels. Well, the simple answer is you move them. Um, but they have to create this biological assessment. And I think this has probably gotta be one of the fastest biological assessments in history. Um, and it got sent off to Fish and Wildlife. They have to read it, dissect it, come up with a biological opinion. They, at the same time, with the Corps of Engineers, have a permit together. And then once those are approved, we get NEPA clearance, which is National Environmental Protection, whatever, clearance in that. Technically, you need NEPA clearance before any plans and specifications are approved through Iowa D O T. Iowa D O T has realized some of the things that we've had to jump through and has been doing the check plans and is approving it. I don't think they can finally clear it until we have the NEPA clearance, but it's just, it's a whole stack of cards and the muscle study was really what was throwing us off. So that's kind of the reason why we've engaged in some of the conversations with the folks that we have, so.
Okay.
Two mussels?
Yeah. Two styles.
Two styles.
Correct.
Okay.
There was a total of three hundred and some mussels found in the area um, of the riverfront where we were gonna plan to do the Tiger Grant work.
Jim, did you have something to add? Thanks, Doc. But I needed that. Thanks.
Um, and one of the things with that muscle study, I think that part of the process that's gonna come out of it is about a monitoring period that will be part of our grant agreement on the backside too, and that'll get incorporated into our funding stream, if you wanna.
Is that gonna cost us some money?
Yeah, it's gonna cost money if they, if we have to move them to. So there's no sense in going in there and trying to move them now because construction on that phase is still two years out. But I think it's a five or six year monitoring period. So our Tiger Grant funds will have actually probably been exhausted by that time unless you build it into a contract with whoever moves it as that part of a monitoring contract.
Yeah.
Which is what, why I would assume we would do.
Yeah. That would be what I would think would be the best.
And, cause I don't know what that type of work can cost, but it could cost more than you might think.
Yeah.
Now, Nick, I just think it's kind of interesting. So the mussels are important to the ecosystem because of why? I don't know.
I'm the wrong guy to answer that question, to be honest.
Cause they're endangered? Okay.
They must do. They're on a list within the Fish and Wildlife Organization.
Okay.
And because federal funded work is going in there, we have to make sure we don't cause ill harm to them.
Yeah.
If, if we were to go in and do work and they were to find dead mussel shells from construction, we could be fined up to certain five thousand dollars or smash shell or something like that.
Wow.
If I was endangered, I'd want them to wait for me too, so.
The one trouble, so the I seventy-four bridge up in the Quad Cities actually found some Higgins eye mussels as well. They, in their brilliant uh, work, moved the mussels upstream of the work. And then as work is going on, they migrated right back down to where they had originally been in the first place. So I would hope we would have more logic than that.
Okay.
Uh, and having to move any mussels here, but after, after some of the dredging or flooding, maybe next year we can not have to worry about it, but I don't know.
Thank you. Bye, Tom. Jim, do you have something else there?
Uh, yeah, I did wanna mention, as you go through those documents, you notice there's three point one million or, no, two point eight million of city funds, I think, in there. Two point seven of that is for sewer separation. Uh, we've incorporated knowing that we're gonna, we have so, some sewer lines to put in, uh, while we're having the work done, we're gonna go ahead and replace those lines now. Uh, rather than have to come back and do that after the project happens. Uh, there's another hundred thousand dollar match that has to do with the Great Places funding for what we're doing on the riverfront. Uh, it showed, the project also shows the three hundred thousand that we were receiving from the state. So there's an overall three point one million shown in there that's the non-federal funds. If, and if that comes up and someone's questioning why there's city money in this, it's for work that's uh, that we're doing with other projects that we're tying into this and have to incorporate the work together. Did wanna note, note, uh, you talked about the Harrison Street, you know, we had funds borrowed from Cascade uh, a long time ago that we've been using to pay for Cascade sewer separation. Uh, Harrison Street was part of that, uh, that we had funds that were still there that we were using to cover that. Uh, as we move forward with the emergency work that needs done over the bluff at that same location, we're just tying it into that same sewer separation work and covering out of the funding that's still left over in that borrowing that we did several years ago.
Okay. Did the work that was supposed to get done several years ago get done?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, we had, one of the things that we end up doing is you do bond, you borrow funds for, with an estimated cost. And I assume that at one point we had a project that we had an estimated cost and when we actually got the bids back, it was less than what the work was. Well, we're doing additional work for the same, in that, in that same vein, in that same area, and it matches the purpose of what we were had originally borrowed it for, so that's
Perfect.
it, it fits with why we're, why we'd use that funding source for it.
Is this the line that went like out over the, the water?
No. Uh, that, this goes, this is water that overflows
Goes to.
and it just goes down the, the bluff and dis- discharges into the river. It's storm water.
Gotcha.
Uh, we have a, there's, we have a sewer line that's in that same area that that, the sewer line goes, ends up going, Mississippi sewer interceptor.
The interceptor, right.
And that does go under the, the uh, river for at least a little bit of, of the distance, maybe not very far. But it's part of the way it, to the plant, it is under the river. Maybe not now when it's lower.
Any other questions on that, gang? No? Okay. Well, last but not least, resolution for approving interlocal agreement between the City of Burlington and Des Moines County for the twenty twenty burn justice assistance grant JAG award, or program award. Chief?
Yes, uh, this resolution is, uh, we did the same thing last year and we purchased some equipment. It's an annual um, award that's given to us, or not given, but we apply for, uh, for equipment. But we have to share that equipment or the funds uh, with a disparate agency, which is the uh, Des Moines County Sheriff's Department. So we approach uh, you as the city council and we approach the board of supervisors to sign this uh, interlocal agreement. And basically this year it's uh, for uh, the funds they wanna disperse is twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars for equipment that will benefit law enforcement, not just for us, but for the Sheriff's Department, Department also. Uh, and we uh, checked with the Sheriff's Department and make sure that it's uh, uh, something that will all be able to use or we can give them that, a part of that equipment. I know we've done it for body cameras in years past. Last year we did it for pole cameras uh, for surveillance. Uh, and uh, so this year we're looking at doing what's called a Sell Bright Mobile Data Extraction Device. Uh, what that is, is basically an opportunity for us to extract information uh, from a cell phone in an investigation after we apply for search warrants. Right now we depend upon uh, the Iowa D C I has uh, someone that's uh, in our area that does that when they're available. So sometimes there's a lag period there uh, for us getting that information in a timely manner. We have to wait for them to be at work or to be available. If that one person takes vacation, we kind of have to wait until they come back. So this, this agreement and this equipment would be uh, ours between us and the Sheriff's Department, available for investigations for them or us. And uh, the other agency would be West Burlington Police Department, which we wouldn't, wouldn't hesitate to uh, help our law enforcement partners in that aspect. The other part is uh, the, the training for the equipment use. Uh, our evidence specialist uh, has agreed to uh, go to the training and be available uh, for that uh, extraction. And so it would uh, be part of evidence that's extracted and, and uh, so it'd be kind of uh, nice to have that equipment in the evidence room and then we'll just do the extraction there. And uh, the Sheriff's Department also will have somebody that's available for that training on how to use that device to extract that information and how to make it uh, available to the investigators.
Any questions for the chief? I will say, real quick, you go ahead and ask your question.
Uh, chief, that was just called a cell phone extraction device?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah, the name of, the name of the equipment is a Sell Bright Mobile Data Extraction Device.
It sounds like a very valuable piece of equipment to have.
And it's been available to us, like I said, for years to the D C I. We just have And it's been available to us, like I said, for years to the DCI. We just have to get ahold of their personnel to do it. And it's something that, that we can use these funds for. That way, we have it on site for us.
Oh, yeah. A lot more timely if you had it on site. I could see that. Yeah.
Yeah. Or if he's gone and somebody needs some information extracted, our partners in Henry County or Lee County, they can come to us. And as long as we're certified in the extraction of it, we're good to go.
Time is of the essence a lot of times.
Sometimes it is, yes.
Just wanted to thank you for my experience down on the training unit. You know, I reflected on that after, after that on Friday. And it's amazing how quickly even on those planned scenarios, and I thought I knew what was coming, how quickly it turns. It's a, it's a, hats off to the, the men and women of the PD because it's a scary proposition dealing with some of those scenarios. So.
Yeah, it's, the firearms training simulator, it, and I explained to you some of the benefits with that equipment. And I'll offer it up to the rest of the council if you want an opportunity to come down and go through a display. I know the mayor wasn't, was a little hesitant to get ahold of our training devices and go through some of the scenarios. But we promised no cameras, no videotaping, anything like that. So.
You still need to know.
So, and I really, I really would look forward to you, Mr. Inker, coming down. And we'll put you through some scenarios and.
See if I still got it.
See how it goes.
See how it goes. Yeah, I didn't do too bad on the one. And the other one, I have to apologize to Liddy, but I knew she was wrong. And so I just wanted it over with.
But there's more to it than just the scenario base. There's accuracy and, and, you know, just basic functions of the firearms that it helps us with. And it's right there at the police department. I know that over the weekend, usually they have an instructor that's available. And I know our night shift got an opportunity to do some training on Sunday night. So I know they're using it quite frequently.
Yeah, I could, he could definitely see the time savings as far as overtime, driving, and the, and the savings in ammunition. Plus, it's just great training. So I, I was, I was completely impressed with it. That was money well spent. So thank you for that.
No, thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Good, chief.
Thanks.
Step forward any time you want. It's pretty good. Staff, any, anything for you? Eric? Chief, you don't have anything else to add? I assume since you sat down. Don? I don't know what the mussels are good. I'll find out. Chief? Trexel? No? Nick?
Sorry.
Probably sauteing butter.
Every time you get up, Nick, I know it's gonna cost us money.
No, this is good.
Okay.
So you saw a press release probably go out this, on Friday last week for work that'll happen this week. Traffic signage went out, I think, today for the Seal Coat Project. In the press release, we put a map, which is almost, is way easier to understand where that work is gonna happen. That work will start Wednesday pending weather. And then next week, the Dalbar Retrofrit is slated to start. And we're gonna send out letters to the property owners in that area to let them know that work will kind of, you know, mess up their travels for a little bit. It won't close off access, but it will be one lane road with a, like a pilot car and stoplights at some points or flaggers. So that'll kick off next week.
Great. Jim? Stephanie, did you have anything? No?
Though I would say Stephanie may end up having a resolution for transfers if we have any issues here this next, this next session. We're in the process of closing out fiscal, last fiscal year, fiscal year 20. And one of the things I know is we're doing transfers. I don't think that she was gonna need it, but if we end up with the transfers between funds that go over authorized amounts, we have to have approval from you before we can make those transfers. And we're down to the, to the wire. And there's, I think, one account maybe that you were close on that I don't think you're gonna go over. But if she does, we may add a resolution for that.
Okay.
Radio.
Yeah, who can do council talk this week? Linda? Anybody else?
You got a new baby, don't you?
Yeah, I'm.
You need sleep.
I can do it if no one else can. But I, I know you can. First week of school.
I'm out.
You're out?
Meetings all week.
Okay. So Linda and I. Thanks, Jim.
Other, we had a little bit of discussion on a TMA site, that, hopefully that project, I don't know what his timing's gonna end up being as he has authorization to move forward. He's still waiting for that authorization. So when, at least we've started to see some action with that and see where he ends up being as he does finally get the release of funds and can, and then put together a schedule for that project to begin. The Blaw Building has been coming along. You guys have been keeping up with the inspections. I know they have a couple of things that are major issues that still need to be done as part of that before they can issue a certificate of occupancy. But somewhere around October 1, they should be in a position, depending on where they are with that, to have that occur. And one of the things we have to have is a parking lot. You're kicking off a pre-construction meeting tomorrow on that.
Yeah, dates.
So that's one of the things, as they go through that pre-construction meeting, they'll, they'll put together their work, proposed work schedule for getting that work done. And hopefully it lines up fairly well with what we need for the parking lot there. Former PB, PD building. Merge had been after, they had a couple of issues come up with their project. One, they got some quotes back on demolition that were significantly higher. I don't know what significantly means, what their definition of it is. They didn't share them, but were significantly higher than they had anticipated. They also did not receive the, is that workforce housing tax credits that they were after? Close to a million dollars. So for perspective, there, the state of Iowa put out a fund, fund request. They had 10 million available. They received 35 million of applications. They, this project did not get awarded funds. Merge did receive funds on another one of their projects. They noted that on the other one, I mean, the only difference that they saw between them, that was one that was built, was, was ready to be built on. They are probably gonna come back and, well, I know they're gonna come back and negotiate with us to, to see if we're interested in considering going through the same type of, a similar process for next year. We've already been in some level of communications. And they would put forward a, at some point here in the next couple of months, I assume, a term sheet of what they'd like to see if they were, if they were to consider for the, for doing this again. Now, if the council wants to entertain that, it would be a separate development agreement because this one is, had the timeframe for closure this year. What they're doing is there were some of the contingencies. One of those was receiving workforce housing tax credits. They didn't receive it. So they're not exercising their option to proceed. We'd have to go through the, a new process for getting a development agreement in place that would probably be fairly similar to what we saw last year. So that's just something to look, look forward to see occur as, as you move forward. You're gonna have to evaluate if you wanna move forward like that or not. We had the option to just do a demo ourselves. I think that we would find if we do the demo of our property, all we're doing, if they, if we're still gonna entertain giving a lot to them is increasing the overall project costs to do two separate demos. We could do the demo and have a different avenue for moving forward. It doesn't make sense to me, but if that's what you wanted to do, we certainly could.
Sure. Yeah, I wondered if they would be eligible to possibly apply for that again next year.
They can. And. Is it the same funding source that they're after that they listed in that? Do you, do you remember?
They're also looking at brownfield, great field tax.
And that may be, the, the tax credits route may, because they're gonna want us to sponsor if, if that's the route they move forward, give them a letter of support on it. Maybe a route that gives them an alternative that gives them another, another way to make this project occur.
Okay.
So.
Did they close on both buildings?
They just closed on the other one. They did not close on ours.
On ours because of it?
Because of this.
Okay. So they own the other building, right?
They own the other building. So, yeah, they're still committed to trying to make this work. And it doesn't mean they can't sell the other building, too, but.
Sure. Okay.
And just a couple of other items to note. You know, we're, as we've moved forward with what's happened this year, this has been the year of change. And personnel policy wise, we're on our sixth version, fifth or sixth version of a personnel policy dealing with COVID related issues. And it's just gonna keep on happening as we move forward. Every time there's a, an update to what the recommendations are that are out there, we have to update our policy. And, you know, we've talked about it with department heads and with the attorney. And we just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping up with the, the most current recommended practices and keeping our policies up to date with them and putting ourselves in the best position to protect everyone's safety and avoid lawsuit, too. We always like that. Something that came out over the weekend that is gonna be difficult to see what happens with, I don't know. It's partially probably a bargaining chip, but it's there, an executive order on payroll taxes. I don't know how we're gonna implement it. I don't know what our options are moving forward. We'll see how that proceeds. But, you know, those kinds of things sort of make our lives difficult, but it's the same for every employer.
All right.
So that's another thing that, you know, as we move forward, that we're having to deal with, where do our policies need to adjust?
Sure.
So that's all I had. So.
Is there any update on the pool?
It's fixed.
Fill it, test on liner?
And you've tested it, and I don't know that you've came up with any issues?
Not as yet.
So what we're doing yet this fall, we're not opening. But we, we are looking to fill it, I think, so you can do some training, recertifications of guards who would otherwise lose those certifications.
Okay. We're gonna fill it for that? Can't we just use somebody else's?
We had, we wanted to fill it for no other, for the purpose, too, I think, just to see if it was okay and there weren't any problems.
If it's fixed.
We're gonna have a water cost.
Okay. That was my primary concern is I didn't want to fork out a couple thousand dollars to fill it.
Yeah.
Just to get certifications.
Can we do the dog swim if we fill it?
We can't play with the liner.
Oh, rats.
So that's gonna stay somewhere else.
My dogs will be sad.
River's open. Does that all you have there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Counsel, Bill?
The only thing I have is one school's already open, other schools are gonna be opening, kids are gonna be walking. Kind of watch out for them.
Thank you for that. Robert?
Mussels taste like chicken. I, I really don't know. I had my baby on Wednesday.
Congratulations.
It's part of our life now. And the kids eat like crazy. So I'm almost sleep deprived and I'm not sure it always makes sense. So, thanks.
Matt?
I just want to encourage everyone to keep the family and friends of a former council member who passed away this last week and their thoughts and prayers.
Amen. Linda?
I learned a new word today. De-rachoe. De-rachoe. It means severe windstorm, widespread, damaging winds. And I know my father, who lives in Ames, it just ripped trees out by the ruts and took both his ham radio antennas. So he won't be doing any ham radio for a while. Anyway, bottom line is be safe. We've had some severe erratic weather going through. So everybody stay away from those windows and, and, and take the necessary precautions and be safe.
I, I don't really have anything except just a, a point of good news. I was in Kenosha, Wisconsin this weekend and ran into some friends of mine that, and I don't hang out with them, but they come to Burlington every year to vacation. What a great thing that is. They come to Burlington, they came down to play a golf course, they stayed at Fun City. They called me, and I was busy that night that they were here. Normally, they'll stay three or four days and do steamboat days. But I was up in Kenosha and was talking to them. And we were at a restaurant, and they were just telling anybody that would listen what a great town Burlington is. So sometimes it's worthwhile to hear somebody that's not from here, because we see all the warts, to hear what a great and attractive town Burlington is. It really made me proud to be from Burlington. And who knows, maybe we'll get some more vacationers from Kenosha, Wisconsin.
Yeah. Can they shoot a commercial for us?
I don't know. I have to ask.
There's a, there's a great place there called The Coffee Pot.
Yes.
It's awesome.
Yeah, we were there. I needed, well, I'll tell you that later. Anyway, that's all I have. Let's.